Good evening. I would like to welcome you to, and I'd also like to call it Order of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting for June, this third day of the month, 2024. At this time, I would recognize Commissioner Kent Herman for our invocation, and Commissioner, then following the invocation, Commissioner Ronnie Reese for the pledge of allegiance.
You would bow with me. Heavenly Father, just thank you for letting us come this way this evening, dear Lord. Just be with us here today and help us make the right decisions. Be pleasing in your sight for the county. Be with all of our elected officials, state, county, and federal, and be with all of our military regardless where they're at. Keep them safe till you return them back to their homes. Be with all of our police officers, first responders, EMS, and keep them safe till you return them back to your home. And now just help us do the right thing here, make the right decisions that be pleasing for this county. In your name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number four on our agenda is Commissioners' Reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I went to the May voluntary farmland preservation meeting. They had a bunch of renewals in addition. So as of that meeting, when we finished that night, we got 11,562 acres. That's in farmland preservation in the county now. Our next meeting will be August the 20th, 2024. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was able to attend the concert courthouse park on Saturday night. The Wistons were there singing and had a real good crowd and turnout for that. Everybody seemed to like it and it was a good day for it. Weather was good, wasn't really hot. They came last year, but only got to be there about 30 minutes. A storm came up, so they moved it up to June, so it worked out real good. Looked like probably 400 or 500 people there, yes, so good event. That's all I got. Thank you.
I went to the Western Pimaunt Council Government Policy Board meeting, and one of the biggest things that they talked about that night was the transfer request that's come from Charlotte. And there'll be more information coming out from the CAG on that within the next couple weeks or so. But of course, we passed a referendum that night, not a referendum, but a resolution that night that all the counties and the municipalities all supported against the inter-transfer of the water from Catawba into the Charlotte area. And like I say, there'll be more coming out about it, and it looks like everybody in our area is going to be fighting it, and we'll see what happens.
Mr. Chairman, the other week, there was a few of us that attended the Bethlehem Beach Park dedication, grand opening, and it was great to see that there was already some families out there using the beach and park area. One family that I remember sitting at a picnic shelter area pulled me to the side and thanked me for the county putting this in. They were already enjoying it, and it was free. So I do see that being a pretty useful area up there for Alexander County and probably will pull some folks across the bridge as well to enjoy. So looking forward to a safe summer up there.
Like Mr. Pendle said, I attended that as well, and the Wittenburg Access Swim Beach is much more than just a swim beach. You know, obviously, restrooms, concessions, you know, concessions. But just, you know, just the park areas in general, you know, nice big wide concrete paths to walk out on the peninsula to the old fishing dock that's been there a long, long time. Cover picnic areas, really nice, I don't know that they're meant to be bear-proof, but animal-proof trash cans that, I don't know why I was impressed by that, but I think I need those at my house. But anyway, it's a neat, it's definitely a neat addition to our parks, park system. And publicly just want to say to Duke Energy, thank you for, you know, their involvement. They, you know, they leased us that property for essentially nothing, as well as shared in costs, and Duke Energy, you know, continues to be a good partner with the county. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and gentlemen, there is one change that we need to make to the agenda. Under, under the consent agenda, Alexander County Appointments, number two, Historic Preservation Commission, we need to remove Lee Sharp from that reappointment list. So I would make a motion that we approve the agenda with the removal of Lee Sharp from the reappointment list under Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? If not, I want, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Next item, public comment. We do have one person that has signed up for public comment. Mr. Bud Kaywood, Mr. Kaywood, if you would approach the podium, I will read the public comment guidelines that are put forth by the state of North Carolina. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time limit or a time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting of the month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select one spokesperson to represent a group of citizens with the same concern or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. Any citizen wishing to address the Board during public comment shall contact the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. Mr. Kaywood, please, please go ahead.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to come here, and I was very pleased when I saw on the agenda this week, the resolution directing the, I'm sorry, the Budget Ordinance Amendments, project, oh, these are out of order here, I'm sorry. The Resolution opposing Charlotte's IBT Transfer Request. I'm here to voice my opinion regarding the Charlotte Water Inter Basin Transfer. My opinion is that it seeks to adjust the authorized amount of water taken from the Catawba River and waterway basin as well as the Adkin and the PD River. In other words, to keep it short, they take what they want. I went to the, that first meeting on May 8th. It was packed. It was amazing how many people that were there. As a matter of fact, there were more people standing outside the fire, the fire department there and the building and in the parking lot and in, on the sidewalks than there were inside the building. That's how many people attended, attended that. And many of the people came from the surrounding counties. It was, it was pretty special. I was able to get in, and I worked my way up all the way to the front to where they were having the presentation, so I could see everything that was going on. And when I looked out across the auditorium right there, there was no room to move. I mean, it was shoulder to shoulder, elbow to elbow, and I would have to say that everybody in there opposes this. There were, there were a lot of questions that the public were asking, but there were very few answers that they were getting. So it's something that we need to pay attention to moving forward. There were some people who I recognized from Bethlehem and a lot from Hickory. There were several commissioners and town managers from the surrounding counties and towns. I plan to attend the Morganton meeting. There are three more meetings that are coming up. Let's see here. All right, there's two. Meeting number two through number five will be May 9th through the 27th in the Charlotte and South Carolina area. And then meeting number six is a joint meeting again with Hickory and Morganton, at Morganton at the Coma Performing Arts Center. These meetings last about 30 or 40 minutes. It gives everybody an opportunity to voice their opinion and basically get no answers in return. Now, I'm not, I'm not joking, it's what it appeared to be. I know I only have about three minutes. Am I, am I good?
Yeah, you've crossed it.
Okay. I plan on attending the Morganton meeting. I would like to see as much information as possible be reported regularly in our local news on this to keep the public up to place. There were a lot of, like I said, there were a lot of town managers there, there were county commissioners there. So I think we're on the right track by trying to make the public pay attention to what's going on, because this is not a healthy situation, no matter how you look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaywood, for your concern and also your involvement in the county. We do appreciate it. Moving on, number seven, adoption of the fiscal year, fiscal year 2024, 2025 Alexander County Budget Ordinance. I would recognize the interim county manager, Ben Falconberry.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. In your packet, you will find the proposed budget ordinance for fiscal year 2425. This budget is structurally balanced and has a priority-based objective. The proposed general fund budget for Alexander County totals $56,616,494, which is around a 2% decrease from our current year budget as it stands. Some highlights include a proposed 2-cent property tax decrease for all taxpayers, which is currently 67 cents per $100 in value. That is a proposed reduction to 65 cents. It also includes a 5% COLA for employees and an increase in benefits for employees with no additional costs. This budget has continued focus on public safety needs as well as some impending capital needs, and also includes level funding for nonprofit organizations that we partner with from this county and the surrounding area, as well as our fire departments. There's also an increase in funding of $903,966 from this fiscal year to the school system to continue the Fire Academy and the North Carolina Pre-K Program. Also included in the budget ordinance is the proposed budgets for the Fire District Fund, the Opioid Settlement Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, and the County Water and Sewer Fund, which are all balanced and, in my opinion, fiscally responsible. Fire tax rates will remain the same with the exception of a .05 cent increase to Vash Ty Fire District. The capital outlay in this budget ordinance shows a decrease of over $200,000 from this current fiscal year for a total of 1.5, excuse me, $1,532,734. Included in the capital needs are IT upgrades, eight vehicles, two ambulances, one of which has been on back order, a trash truck, and an appropriation of funding to assist in an armored vehicle for our sheriff's department, which is, as you well know with the news lately, a much-needed improvement for our, for our law enforcement officers. Seized drug monies will also cover the majority of that purchase. Budget message and budget have been available for public review since the May 20th meeting, and public notice of such has been provided. I would like to thank the Finance Department for their hard work in putting this together, along with all of our department heads, which over the course of the last year have helped to make this budget happen while also prioritizing the provision of exceptional services to our citizens and our community. With that, I will step aside and try to answer any questions you may have.
Gentlemen, anyone have a question?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to make a couple of comments.
Absolutely.
You know, last, last year I voted against the budget. We just went through a revamp and, with a 40% increase roughly, and I think it was too much. And I think this is a good step in the right direction with the 2-cent tax cut. And as Mr. Falconberry has said, we've got a COLA in for our employees this year with Christmas bonus that we didn't have two years ago. So I would like to support this budget, make a motion that we do so.
My second to motion.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the 2024-25 budget. Is there any other discussion or questions?
I've got a few comments in regards to the budget. 2-cent tax reduction, in my opinion, is premature. It's based on counting eggs that have not yet hatched. If you run the numbers, which I know Commissioners are intuitive and looking at numbers throughout this and that, there's no numbers that project that this is the time for a 2-cent reduction. I say that on the basis of loving and supporting Alexander County. And anytime that I'm involved in making a decision, I do base it on what's in front of me as far as the factual evidence. I did, at a previous public hearing in regards to the budget, mention, and I'm going to go over a couple of those items just so their folks are aware of what 2 cents actually means. Our median house value in Alexander County is $272,500 or approximately. With a 2-cent reduction, that's a savings of $50 per year approximately. And then, like Mr. Herman, or Commissioner Herman mentioned a moment ago of farm usage in the county, we do have a lot of farms and acreage that's in the farm preservation, lower taxes. We do have a lot of timber, and those are, those are good things. I'm not knocking that in any measure, but those are good things. We need, we need housing, we need food, we need shelter, clothing, all the above to, to live. And that 2-cent tax reduction, let's say that you probably, for a farm in our county, if you had a 100-acre farm, that might save you $10 on that farm after you're already saving on your other deductions you've got. But for the county, that 2-cent is worth about $819,000. And what that means for this county is this. We had the reevaluation. Our property values did come in line with what properties are, what you could sell your property for realistically, or maybe less actually than what you could sell it for. And speaking with the Tax Department, I believe that they did hold it below what the state recommended them go to. So the Tax Department of Alexander County did us all a favor there. What we need in this county is more to maintain or improve our services, and to do so comes with an expense. And those expenses are, are large, they're wide, but they're in need. One is, for instance, we're just, since we have them here tonight, we use EMS. We need another crew. Well, that crew's going to cost close to $700,000 probably. And I know that the ambulances have already been ordered for that, so that's an ongoing expense that we'll have per year, year after year. Other things that we need is, we have a great group of folks that work for Alexander County. And before this evaluation, the previous evaluation eight years ago, it shot up, tax rate was, you know, manipulated to come in reason of what the budget needs were, and then we went stagnant for seven to eight years on money. So if we set, here's the standard today, this is the monies we're going to have, knowing that historically Alexander County only has a 1.12% growth rate per our tax, per our Tax Department, and I know our previous county manager said it was 1.4, but I did dig a little deeper in the numbers to verify because I just, it's a big decision. Knowing that we do have a COLA of 5% in this current proposed budget, what do we do with raises, COLAs, just like Chairman Little mentioned one time, that COLA raises, they're all the same, it's a raise? So if we're going stagnant on our revenues for the next seven to eight years, pretty much, because 1.1% growth in Alexander County is equal to almost $41 million of new value here. If you want to break that down, you can break it down into the amount of houses, industry. Well, we don't have industry coming here, even though that would be great, because that would alleviate some of the tax burden off of our homeowners and landowners in the county. Also, our sales tax has deflated. It has, I've not had the numbers in the last two weeks, but it was just skimping by as far as being level, not really green, not really red. I don't know where it's at currently, but if I had to guess, I'm going to say we're starting to put our toes into the red on it. So that tells me that people in the economy have pulled back on spending money on this and that. And then we have other things. So if we want to give our employees raises that they much deserve, this board here, I want to remind this board that we have, over the last few years, went into certain departments in our county and tried to bring their salaries up to somewhat par for their surrounding counties, even though we'll never match those salaries in surrounding counties. They just, they're just so much bigger than us. But our, our employees deserve to have those raises, those bonuses, on a continual basis. The cost of living goes up each year. The inflation, according to the Association of County Commissioners, if I remember right, let me look, I don't want to misquote anything, people will tear me apart later. 2021 to 2022 inflation for North Carolina and also Alexander County was 6.5%. Cost of business in '22, '23 went up 2.4%. So if we're going stagnant on revenue and our growth is less than the percentages I just mentioned, I know that some of us are banking on the possibility of these new housing developments coming in, but we've been hearing that ever since I've been a commissioner, and this is my second term, so I'm hesitant, hesitant to pull that trigger and approve a 2-cent tax reduction based on numbers. I don't have anything that says, Marty Pendle, right here's your evidence, go ahead and do that. Now, do I want to? Yeah. But if I was going to, and we're in the position to be able to do that without hinging upon certain things happening in the near future, then I would want to see a larger tax reduction than 2 cents. I'd want to make it worthwhile to our citizens. But I don't think, and this is just my opinions, folks, mine alone, I do not believe that we are currently in the, the right position. It's premature to ask for the 2-cent reduction with all of the infrastructure needs and all of the services plus the wants from our folks in this county. I've asked several folks, I've had several opinions sent my way, I even put a post on Facebook, social media, just to reach out to our constituents, our citizens in the county to see what their mindset was. They want things. They want things in our county. They're tired of being left behind. They're tired of doing without. They want their county to provide things for their families to do. Simple as that. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the thing that concerns me the most is when the budget was presented to us. It was presented to us saying that the Medicaid Hold Harmless Funding was going away and that our sales tax was going down. And I firmly believe, and sitting here having watched this over the years, that we can cut taxes 2 cents now, but it'll cost us 4 cents later. And I'll not be able to vote for a 2-cent tax decrease at this time because of what was presented by the county manager about Medicaid Hold Harmless Funding going away and the reduction in sales tax, and you could see it going down. And he gave that information to us, and it was in there, and it was letting you know that it was going to start going down, and if it does, that may as well have to dip into fund balance. And trust me, I have been in a situation in this county where they dipped into the fund balance, and it was absolutely no fun. And then came a whopping tax increase, and I do not ever want to see that happen in Alexander County again. And that's my only reason for being against the budget. And another thing that sort of concerns me there is you say that we're giving 2-cent tax break to all county, all county residents. Well, we are except for Vash Ty. Vash Ty will not get 2 cents. It'll go up a half a cent. They'll only get a penny and a half on the property taxes because we're increasing their fire taxes to half a cent. And that's to help the community. I don't have anything against that, but at the same time, the entire county and the citizens not getting the same tax break as everybody would get due to the way that we have to do Vash Ty because of their low, low tax rate. Well, they're not getting the revenues they should get to help offset the cost of the fire service. And that's a very valuable asset to the Vash Ty community. And I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just stating that as fact, they won't see that because they'll only see a 1.5 cent decrease in their tax rate. But my main concern is the Medicaid Hold Harmless and the sales tax decrease. That bothers me, and I don't want to see us go into our fund balance.
One thing, one thing I would, I would say pertaining to the, and, um, Mr. Yoder, I completely understand your point about.
I just make a point.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, this is, and Mr. Chairman, let me tell you, this is a good budget, okay? I don't have a problem with the budget. It's the 2-cent tax decrease that bothers me. And other than that, I want folks to know, this is a really, really, really good budget, okay? And, and, and I want you to understand that. I'm looking from a financial aspect of it. I sat on this board when our fund balance got to 3%,. I never, ever, ever want to see our county getting that shape again. It was horrible. For six years, we sat here trying to get our fund balance. Our fund balance is the best it's ever been. Our county's in great financial shape right now. I will make sure it stays that way, and that's all I care about. It's, it's nothing personal with me, I don't have an agenda, I just, I love living here and I want everybody to be able to say, our county is in great financial shape, and we want to keep it that way. It's very, very important, very important to me.
No, what I was, what I was getting ready to mention is, I mean, and I'm, I think most people are aware of this, but, you know, different communities do have different fire tax rates.
Yes.
And that's all based on, you know, it's based, based on several factors. I've never asked. I've never asked what exactly it's based on, but just, you know, using common sense. You know, the more rural, the, the more rural the area, the more costly, you know, the more costly to operate. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about, you know, that can be done about that. And, you know, to let you folks know, the, this budget does include a half-cent increase in the fire tax for the BASH-TI community. That was requested by the BASH-TI Fire Department. And if my memory serves me correctly, a half-cent increase in the BASH-TI fire tax rate is going to generate about $14,000 for the BASH-TI Fire Department. And, you know, that's, I think, well, as I say, obviously, the, you know, the fire chief in BASH-TI feels like that's necessary. And we, you know, we as commissioners, and, and I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but I'm not an expert on what it costs to run a fire department. So I don't have any reason to question that. My, my opinion on the budget, just like every, you know, just like everybody. Somebody said, you know, I've heard this before, opinions are like belly buttons, everybody's got one, you know? My opinion on the budget, I think, overall, just like Commissioner Yoder said, I think it's a, I think this is the best budget I've ever been a part of, you know, as a county commissioner. I don't think we've ever had a, a situation, and I may be wrong, we haven't, we haven't since I've been on the board, where, you know, we are able to give employees, you know, 5% up or COLA. I don't know why, but the term COLA bothers me. As a, as a business owner, if somebody makes more, it's a race. Doesn't matter what the cost of living does, 'cause we all know, you know, things cost more every year. But, you know, we're also, you know, also able to, like, like these other gentlemen have mentioned, you know, the improvements to the benefits, the main one is a reduction in the deductible on the county health plan, which will be very beneficial to anyone in the county that has anything, you know, any significant health issues. I think there were a couple other small things, the, you know, the county employees, I think the dental plans, the annual maximum's increasing slightly, and, you know, some things like that. And, and I say "we," the administration was able to do the, is able to do those things without, without expending any more money, largely because we had a good year from a health standpoint as a group of employees. And as to the, as to the two-cent tax reduction, or rate reduction, excuse me, a budget is what you expect to take in and/or spend. You know, it's a, it's a best guess of how much money it's gonna cost to run your family, run your business, run, run Alexander County, run State North Carolina, whatever, you know, whatever it may be, for the, you know, for an upcoming period of time. Doesn't, actually, actually doesn't have to be 12 months. You know, you can do a budget for a week if you want to. And basically, when this budget was put together by our former county manager, Shane Fox, and the department heads of every county department, and our finance department team, basically, they said this is how much money we need. And the amount of money that they need for the upcoming year is what was presented. Is there ever a guarantee that the tax rate won't have to be, you know, is there ever a guarantee that the tax rate won't have to be increased? No. Is there anything saying that it may, you know, is there anything saying that the tax rate will stay whatever it is established to be forever? No. But like I say, there's, there's been a lot of work going in, there's been a lot of work going into, that has gone into this budget. There've been a lot of people, a lot of people involved, a lot of people that know more about the day-to-day and how Alexander County runs than, you know, how Alexander County runs and what our county needs. A lot of people that know more than I do when it comes to that. 'Cause we, we've had discussions amongst ourselves. We make decisions based on the information that is presented to us. If we get bad information, we may make a bad decision. If we get good information, hopefully, we will make a good decision. But I just wanna say, I feel like, looking beyond this, this budget, maybe I'm a little more optimistic than some. I feel like we are going to experience some growth. I also feel like there is still some waste. And not to say, and I don't mean that in a negative, you know, negative connotation at all pertaining to the county and the employees and any, you know, any, or any portion of it. But I do feel like, personally, that there are some areas that we can still run more efficiently. And efficiency typically reduces expenditure, or expenditures. So I, like, so, you know, my opinion, I think it's a, I think it's a solid budget. I think it's a, a very close representation of what will actually be spent, where some budgets in the past, we have over, you know, we have overshot our expenditures, estimates, which isn't, which isn't a bad thing if you're trying to build, you know, build a savings account or a fund balance, which we have to have in case, you know, in case of an emergency. But we are, Alexander County is very, I mean, you know, today, financially, very, in my opinion, very strong, very secure. And biggest thing I wanna say, I appreciate all the work that's going into it. And I feel like this is a darn good budget.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with what you're saying. And to some of the other things, I guess I'm on my third term, I guess, as commissioner. First term, I think you were on it too. We hadn't been in these seats for about three months. I really didn't have my seat adjusted to know what was going on, and, you know, 13 cent tax increase. And that hits me, all my family, my kids, friends, citizens in the county. And it was because of, you know, poor budget management. We've been coming in most of the time under our budget for the last little while. So my thoughts to this are, I've been on here when we had to raise taxes. I like reducing, you know, I'm not a, a fan of keeping somebody else's money. But who knows what tomorrow is gonna hold, you know, for that point. But I'm still optimistic that our money's gonna keep coming in. One thing we might need to maybe work on is change our revaluation, if we can, from eight years to maybe four years or six years. So it's not such a, you know, big drop either way. But, you know, I've talked to a lot of people, seen a lot of people, and everybody's telling me, anything reduced is reduced. So, you know, and we're still putting money into our fund balance. So, you know, whatever happens, it's just like prior school board. I've attended several of those meetings, and even one of the school board members said, "Well, you know, if we bankrupt the school system, the commissioners are gonna bail us out." So, you know, I've been on that end of it too, bailing out our property tax. So we have to do sometimes the hard things. To me, this is a good thing, and, you know, I like the budget. I think it covers a lot of things, probably not everything, but it's a, you know, a lot better than some that we have had to vote for in a pretty tough situation. So, you know, I think it's good for employees and good for our citizens.
One thing, Chairman...
Yes, sir.
Is I do wanna show my gratitude to the folks that worked on the budget. I do agree with everyone up here that this budget, in my opinion, is very sound. A lot of effort put in, a lot of thought, prayer, a lot of discipline. Showing a lot of conserving. So I agree with the budget wholeheartedly. And then we all have our different opinions on the, the tax rate, of course. But the cool thing is that this is a very, pretty diverse board. A, you know, five different mentalities up here. So whatever's, whatever's voted on, decided, that's the way we will roll.
I don't think anybody can hang around to see us duke it out after the meeting. If you're waiting on that, you'll be waiting on, you know?
I do wanna make one clarification. I, I misspoke earlier when it came down to the, the school system appropriation. The request was for 900, this has been discussed at multiple meetings, but I hate to bring it up again. The request was for 903,000. The appropriation in this budget was for a little over 100,000 for pre-K and for the fire academy. So I apologize for that mistake.
It's fine. No problem.
I'm sorry, I'm doing some math real quick. I didn't mean that was wrong. I tell you, these calculator things, just, they're, they're really hard to use. No, and just, you know, and just, I, we obviously don't, are not trying to keep anything, you know, there's nothing that we, we're trying to hide from anybody. Our current, I mean, our, like, our fund balance currently is a little over 41%. And basically, what that means is, if our fund balance were 50%, that means we have the mon, we have money in the bank to operate the county for six months with no revenue whatsoever. If our fund balance is, you know, 25%, then we have enough money in the bank to operate the county for three months. Obviously, if our fund balance were 100%, that means that our fund balance will be equal to our annual budget, which would allow us to operate for one full year, or I say "us," allow the county to operate for one full year if all revenues were to completely dry up due to who knows what. I'm very proud of our, of where, of where we are from a fund balance and/or savings account, to use, you know, a non-public term. Like some of the other commissioners have mentioned, when I first came on the board, the fund balance was nowhere close to healthy. And we are finally, we're finally healthy. And one other way that I kinda look at the budget and the tax, you know, and the two-cent tax, tax rate reduction is, you know, I look at, I look at, no, we don't wanna use fund balance. No, we wanna make sure that we keep that safety net in place. But if there're extenuating circumstances, that's what that's for, in my opinion. Just like at my house, you know, the savings account is to cover the deductible on your health insurance when your 20-year-old daughter has, needs surgery. Or your, you know, or the, the heat pump goes out at your house. You know, those are unexpected, unexpected, if you ask me, bad things, or at least financially. And that's why, you know, that, that's at least the theory behind the savings account, which is, you know, the fund balance is basically the county's savings account. We don't wanna use it, we wanna make sure it's good and healthy. But if there is some turn of events that causes us to be short, we do have that money available. And I'll, I'll say this, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not looking to spend any of the fund balance. I would love for it to stay where it is and/or, I mean, I'd love for us to have six months' worth of funds for backup if needed. And, and to mention, and I'll say, to reiterate what a couple of these guys said, if you're in this position, it doesn't take you long to realize it's okay to have a different opinion. And it's okay to not agree, you know, it's okay to not agree 100% of the time. And like I say, there have been things, there have been, well, actually, there've been, there've been a couple things that I voted against, and all four of the others voted for over the past few, you know, over the past eight or so years or however long. Thankfully, they didn't gang up on me and beat me up in the parking lot or anything like that. And I don't expect that will happen, you know, again. Or, you know, not again, but don't expect anything like that to happen. We, you know, we each have, we, I truly believe that the five of, you know, the five of us sitting here honestly have the best interest of Alexander County and its, and its people. And, you know, we have the, what we feel like is the best thing for Alexander County is people at the center of what we're doing. And just like we mentioned before, different opinions, that's one reason this is a board, and that's, instead of, instead of one person sitting here, one person making that decision is, the, the whole idea behind a, a five-person board, seven-person board, nine-person board, whatever, is to get, is to have differing opinions and to have differing representation. So if you ask me, this just proves that, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Any other discussion, questions?
Call the vote.
We had a motion and a second. We got, all in favor, all in favor of approval of the 2024-25 budget ordinance as presented? Please raise your right hand. All opposed? It is 3-2.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to point out that we have the, we talked about school budget and stuff. We do have Dr. Bill Griffin in the audience. So I do wanna just point out and recognize him and look forward to working, this board looks forward to working with the school system, leadership, and you. And once our new county manager comes into being hired, we will introduce the two of you together, and we look for something to build upon. So thanks for being here.
And I, I was, I was fortunate enough to be available to, and this is... And I, I was, um, I was fortunate enough to be available to, and this is a rabbit hole, or, um, as my wife calls them, a squirrel, kinda thing. Um, before we move on, I would like to mention though, and I should've mentioned this during commission, during, uh, reports, but I was fortunate enough to attend the Board Education Meeting, um, when the county's new superintendent was voted, voted on and announced. Um, and I'm very proud to say that there were quite a few representatives from different, you know, the different parts of Alexander County. Jack Sims was there from the, you know, Tattletail Town Council. Um, our sheriff, Chad Pennell, was there. I, I was, like, obviously, I was there. Um, our clerk of court was in attendance. Um, and I'm probably missing somebody that's really important, and I apologize if, you know, for that, but I just feel like it was a goo, it was, it was, it was a, a good showing to the school system and also to, you know, the county and the community that, um, we all wanna work together and we wanna be supportive and, um, look forward to, um, working closely with the school board to improve and help our school system continue to be successful. Next item on the agenda, let me get back to it. Um, next item on the agenda is a resolution opposing the Charlotte Inter Basin, the IBT transfer request. Um, I would recognize, once again, Inter County Manager Ben Falconberry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. K. Wood has already broken the ice on this issue during pu, public comment, but the, uh, before you, is a resolution opposing Charlotte's request, uh, to transfer sixty-three million gallons per day from the Catawba River Basin to the Rocky River Basin, uh, which is a tributary of the Yak and P.D. River. And just some history of these IBTs or inter-basin transfer requests specifically in our region. Um, these are regulated and approved by the state through the Environmental Management Commission, uh, within DEQ. In two thousand and two, Charlotte Water received approval to transfer thirty-three million gallons daily from the Catawba River to the Rocky River Basin, so they currently hold that certificate for thirty-three million gallons. Uh, in two thousand and five, Concord and Kannapolis requested thirty-six million gallons daily from the Catawba River Basin to the Rocky River Basin. There was a, a negotiated settlement and compromise in two thousand and seven, which allows for ten million gallons per day from the Catawba, but reduces that net number during drought. Um, this occurred after extensive public debate and a change in state law, uh, which changed the way these transfer approval, uh, requests are processed, which is what Mr. K. Wood alluded to with these numerous, uh, public hearings. Um, the public hearings in our region, North Carolina, uh, ended in Albemarle a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there are three public hearings in South Carolina, which is also affected by this, uh, request from Charlotte. Um, the resolution, and I'll be as quick as possible, reads as follows. Um, "North Carolina Environmental Management officials are currently reviewing a request from the city of Charlotte to modify their certificate. Uh, this latest request is a trend in, of additional inter-basin transfer water usage from the Catawba River, uh, which is evidenced by the fire. Charlotte's previously approved certificate of thirty-three million gallons per day, uh, of transfer to the Rocky River, which occurred in two thousand and two, and Concord and Kannapolis's ten million gallons per day from two thousand and seven. The net effect of, uh, those actions will result in a total increased usage of seventy-three million gallons per day from the Catawba to the Rocky River. Now, the Catawba River and its tributaries are not an unlimited supply of water, as evidenced by previous years of drought conditions experienced most notably by the upper Catawba Basin and in the entire state of North Carolina. Alexander County in the western Piedmont region is considered a growth area for North Carolina with additional water needs in the future, and there's valid concern that inter-basin transfers of this magnitude may effectively subsidize gross, growth in receiving areas using limited water resources of the Catawba River Basin. Issues of equity and sustainability are in question as it involves one region bearing the environmental and infrastructural cost of supporting growth in another region, and it is essential to consider the long-term implications and fairness of such resource allocations. And reducing the flow of the Catawba River by transferring water could lead to greater concentrations of pollutants in the river, a reduced flow rate, uh, and various other detrimental effects on aquatic ecosystems, recreational activities, and public health within the Catawba River Basin. Alexander County Board of Commissioners is concerned that the proposed inter-basin transfer, transfer, excuse me, will limit the amount of water available for withdrawal to support growth in our areas due to regulation limits under state and federal laws. And the board also does hereby express its concern, uh, about the long-term availability of water within the Catawba River Basin and believes that transferring water from Catawba to the Rocky River could indeed limit future growth opportunities here. Um, the Catawba Water Re Water Resource Management Group is actively working to update its water supply master plan for the entire river basin, and Charlotte should wait until that process is complete. And previous studies for the Catawba River called for the elimination of inter-basin transfers as a strategy to protect the wa, river and water supplies during drought conditions, and an IBT should be a temporary measure to accommodate growth and not a permanent solution. And whereas the two thousand and fifteen water supply master plan for the Catawba River projected Charlotte's current IBT would be sufficient through twenty sixty-five, and that Charlotte should not increase its IBT for its growth needs over the next thirty years. And Charlotte should instead use that time to implement water infrastructure and policies to eliminate its current IBT certificate issued in two thousand and two. And water availability is crucial for sustaining economic development, agriculture, and quality of life in growing communities, and if water is diverted elsewhere, it may constrain the abilities of, of our community within the Catawba River Basin, uh, to support their own development and population growth. And our region should not be forced to give up its potential growth opportunities to subsidize Charlotte's growth with our water resources. Um, now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners request that the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission deny the city of Charlotte's inter-basin transfer request to modify their certificate to transfer sixty-three million gallons of water per day from the Catawba River Basin to the Rocky River Basin. As a mouthful. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the resolution to oppose the city of Charlotte inter-basin transfer request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, is there any discussion?
This is something that we need to pay close attention to. Very much so, and, uh, because with the drought that we had over the years, several years ago, I mean, it almost affected our drinking water in our community because of the downflow of the water to the Mecklenburg area, and that also with the drought is about to cause tremendous problems for our area. And, uh, I know that the other four counties are gonna do all that they can do to fight this also, uh, with the journey by water coming out of the Catawba River. We, it's, we, we got to put up a big fight, and as they say, in most places that I go, when I go to these state meetings, you know, we gotta put up a fight against the state of Charlotte. I mean, Mecklenburg County, state of Mecklenburg. That's what they call it, the state of Mecklenburg.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
Chairman Lill, uh, piggyback off of Commissioner Yoder, uh, economic development, growth, um, uh, for a county, city, town, uh, entity, number one factor in being able to have growth is water. So that's the importance of the water on the economic side.
Yes.
To piggyback on Mr. Yoder.
Piggy on the piggy.
So, yeah, I'm on, does that mean I, let's see, one, two, I'm, I'm three levels. Yeah. No, um, one thing I was gonna, one of the things that stood out to me in, you know, in this, uh, resolution was, you know, where it said, "Alexander County in the western Piedmont region is considered a growth area for North Carolina." Um, I shared an article, I shared an article with the other commissioners and county manager, um, a week or so ago, that I received from Anthony Starr at the Western Piedmont Council of Government, but I had actually seen it before, before he sent it to me. Um, I didn't share it till I did get it from him, but U.S. News and World reports, um, you know, does, they do, they do what they do, but, you know, one of the things that they, they put out is the best places to live in the United States for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty, you know, whatever year it is. And I don't know how many cities there are in the United States, but it's a lot. I mean, it's a lot. I don't know how many cities are in North Carolina. Um, you know, but to put it into perspective, well, I'll say, I mean, there are a lot. Um, the Hickory Metro, which we are part of, um, is number twenty-six on the list. They polled a hundred and fifty. They, you know, they said, hey, these are the top hundred and fifty cities to live, you know, to live in, in twenty-four, twenty-five. And actually, I pulled the article up on my phone to make sure I knew what number. Um, pulled it up out of, out of the, the text message where I shared it. Um, and what, what got me about, about this list is we're not talking about, you know, we're not talking about little places. Um, number one on the list is Naples, Florida. But, you know, we're talking Boise, you know, big, big cities, Boise, Idaho, Colorado Springs, um, Charlotte's number five, Raleigh's number six, Greenville, South Carolina's number four, um, Austin, Texas, Boulder, Colorado, Green Bay, Wisconsin, um, Asheville, North Carolina's number seventeen. But we're, you know, we're talking about huge, big cities, and you get not far down the list, and Hickory, North Carolina is right there. And one reason we have the, um, Western Piedmont Council of Government is because it's beneficial because we, we are all, you know, considered the quote-unquote Hickory Metro, that being Catawba County, Burke County, Caldwell County, Alexander County. Um, that being said, when, you know, big national, international media says, hey, this is a great place to live, um, people, people notice that. And I don't know, I see this because of my day job, but people are leaving, you know, the monster cities, New York, Chicago, as well as, you know, hu, you know, big, big, big urban areas, and they're wanting a little more rural. Well, it's hard to go from Manhattan to the woods in Alaska. And small cities like Hickory and the areas around them are very attractive because they're much, you know, same reason I live, same reason I live where I live, you know, live here. I don't wanna live in Manhattan, I don't wanna live in the Bronx, I don't wanna live in, um, Los Angeles, I don't wanna live in Chicago. And water is an absolute necessity. And, you know, we, we are obviously, um, absolutely and unequivocally against Charlotte taking another drop of water out of the Catawba River Basin because the Catawba River Basin affects, you know, provides water from, um, you know, high in the mountains of North Carolina to Charleston, South Carolina. Cause I was really, I thought it was really cool with it, when I found out that, you know, the water that lands at my house that ends up in Lake Hickory ends up hitting the ocean and, you know, in Charleston. Um, so we need to take this very seriously, and I can say for our board, um, to you folks, we will take it very seriously, we will do everything we can to prevent, um, anything happening to our water source being the Catawba River. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor of approval of the, um, resolution, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, no passing announcement. Thank you. Um, next item is a resolution directing the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. I would recognize David Moose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight, we'll bring before you a resolution for Alexander County to authorize the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. Before I go through the resolution, I wanna bring you a little bit of a statistic update from our port program. As you may know, uh, last year, uh, the board authorized some funding to start a port or post overdose response team, community paramedic program. Uh, it's been a very successful program by, uh, what I could measure, and want to bring you a little bit of statistics from that. Um, year-to-date for the county, and this is from January, uh, Alexander County has experienced forty-seven overdoses and two overdose-related deaths. Those overdoses were forty-nine percent female, about fifty-one percent male. The average age of the person overdosing was about thirty-six years old. So as you can see, overdose is something that affects everyone, it doesn't discriminate. Um, the drug of choice primarily was fentanyl at seventeen percent, uh, methadone at ten point six percent, and third was unknown opioids at eight point five percent. The Narcan administration's success rate is ninety-eight percent, which is encouraging because, uh, that's establishing that Narcan is working in reversing these opioid overdoses. And that's where port has focused very heavily on. Um, the, uh, Port Community Paramedic, Shannon Childers, is here with us tonight along with our EMS director, and, uh, he's been very busy building the program up since October when he started. Um, they currently have two podcasts that are out there and available. Um, they've also added two peer support volunteers, and, uh, the resolution that I'll bring from you before you tonight will look to expand that program as well as an additional, uh, funding strategy. So the resolution, uh, this is a resolution by the County of Alexander to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. It states that whereas Alexander County has joined national settlement agreements with companies engaged in the manufacturing, distribution, and dispensing of opioids, including settlements with drug distributors Cardinal, McKesson, and AmerisourceBergen, and the drug maker Johnson &amp; Johnson, its subsidiary Janson Pharmaceuticals, whereas the allocation, use, and reporting of funds stemming from these national settlement agreements and certain bankruptcy resolutions, the opioid settlement funds are governed by the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. Whereas Alexander County has received opioid settlement funds pursuant to these national settlement agreements and deposited the opioid settlement funds in a separate special revenue fund as required by Section D of the MOA, and whereas Section E point six of the MOA states that opioid settlement funds can be used for a purpose when the governing body includes in its budget or passes a separate resolution authorizing the expenditure of a stated amount of opioid settlement funds for that purpose or those purposes during a specified period of time, and the budget or resolution should indicate that it is an authorization for, authorization for expenditure of opioid settlement funds. State the specific strategy or strategies the county or municipality intends to fund pursuant to option A or option B, using the item, letter, and/or number in exhibit A or exhibit B to identify each funded strategy and state the amount dedicated to each strategy for a stated period of time. Now therefore be it resolved, in alignment with the North Carolina MOA, Alexander County authorizes the expenditure of opioid settlement funds as follows, and I'll summarize the two strategies. The first strategy is a continuation of the post overdose response team, and, uh, this is included in exhibit A, um, strategy number eight, and it is authorized for an amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we estimate that to be a high estimate for this year. Um, last year, I think we appropriated about two hundred and two thousand dollars to get the program started, but, uh, this additional funding will not only continue, um, the position that, uh, currently is in place, but will also seek to add a second full-time port community paramedic, along with vehicle and all the equipment necessary, as well as, uh, bringing on those two volunteer peer supports as part-time. supports as part-time peer support personnel. It will also seek to expand the trainings that are offered and the reach of that program. The second strategy authorized is titled Harm Reduction Vending Machine. This is an interesting strategy. We were fortunate enough to partner with Blue Cross Blue Shield to obtain funding from them to purchase two vending machines and are seeking to utilize opioid funding to purchase the materials to put into those vending machines, primarily naloxone or Narcan, as well as some other harm reduction materials as we deem are authorized under the MOA. But this is authorized under Exhibit A, Strategy Seven. The amount authorized for the strategy for this year that we're requesting is $16,000. Both of these will run concurrent to the fiscal year starting July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. The harm reduction vending machines will be placed in two strategic locations in Alexander County. The first one will be located at the Mobile Cafe here in Taylorsville. The second one, we are still seeking a permanent location for that, but we are targeting potentially Stony Point. We see a lot of overdose sort of hotspots in several areas of the county, and that is one area that we see some hotspots. The vending machine will operate as a free service to the public. Anyone can come up to the vending machine and access 24 hours a day, seven days a week, get access to Narcan and other harm reduction materials. So our intent there is to make that readily accessible to the community through a community distribution program such as that in an effort to reduce overdose deaths. So the total $1 amount of opioid settlement funds appropriated across the above name and authorized strategies totals $466,000. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. The Narcan vending machines, I've seen those in some places. So that's a free service, you know? How much does it cost to stock the machine back? Do you have any idea?
What we've priced the Narcan doses, and it's two doses per unit, is about $45 each. So we're looking at putting that in there as well as some kits that'll contain fentanyl and xylazine test strips along with some other appropriate materials. Also looking into other authorized harm reduction materials. We don't have an exact cost on those, but as we determine that those are authorized to be purchased with this funding, then we'll look to add those in there as well.
So this is funded with the, you know, just for everybody that's listening?
Yeah.
If there is somebody listening, hopefully, you know, I think there are, that, you know, we're using that money to pay for what it's created, actually.
Yeah. So Blue Cross funded the purchase of the machines itself. The opioid settlement funding will pay to stock those machines. And then our Port Community Paramedic Program will work in conjunction with our Health Department to coordinate the ordering and procurement of the Narcan and other supplies as necessary. And then the port staff will actually be going out and monitoring the stocking of the machines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it's, you know, I hate that we have, I hate that we have the need for a, you know, for port paramedics as well as, I hate that we have the need for Narcan vending machines and fentanyl test, you know, test strips and all those things. But I'm very glad that, you know, we're able to provide those, especially using pharmaceutical company money. So, you know, I can't see any negative to, you know, I can't see any negative to this other than the sad fact that we have to deal with this, you know, in the first place.
Yeah, I agree. It's the sad reality, but it is the reality. And by doing this, these strategies and putting these programs into place, we're leveraging that funding, as you said, to reach those people who are in addiction, to try to reach them and bring them into recovery. And if we save a life, then it's well worth the money spent, in my opinion.
That's right. Well, three of our adopted children, which equates to two birth mothers, are deceased from overdoses. Both within the last three years.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's a problem.
It is.
It is a problem. So, gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the resolution directing the expenditure of opioid settlement funds?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 28 through 32, and Project Budget Ordinance, number P.3 for the Bowman Court Sewer Project. I would turn it back over to our Invermont County Manager, Ben Falkenberry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 28 is to adjust personnel costs or salary changes made during this budget year. This includes the Christmas bonus that was not originally budgeted for vacation payouts for employees that have left our service and other approved salary adjustments. It's important to note that this amendment does not increase the general fund budget as the difference was covered by salaries from other departments that were either overbudgeted or unfilled positions. Budget Amendment Number 29 is to adjust the solid waste fund budget for the current fiscal year to account for personnel costs that differed from original budget estimates. Again, this will not result in an increase in expenditures as the costs are recovered from other line items within the same fund. Budget Amendment Number 30 is to amend the general fund to increase the library budget for revised allocation of state aid funds as those funds were more than what were originally budgeted. It also increases the detention center budget for estimated medical supplies and inmate medical bills for the remainder of this budget year. This includes a single invoice for over $14,000. It decreases estimates for sales tax revenue based on year-to-date collections that are lower than expected, and to increase the estimated interest revenue based on earnings that are higher than expected. And it also increases the budget for social services representative payee client revenues and expenditures that offset. Budget Amendments Number 31 and 32, both of these amendments are book entries required for financial statement presentations. No additional expenses will be incurred, and this will not affect the county's fund balance. These are to increase the general fund as well as the solid waste fund by the amounts listed due to the requirements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 96, also known as GASP 96, which governs the accounting treatment of subscription-based information technology arrangements, which requires us to treat these types of service agreements as more of a less or less C relationship for access to their software. And the Project Budget Ordinance is for the Bowman Court Sewer Pump Station. It's for the construction of a new sewer pump station and associated eight-inch force main on the property located along Bowman Court to serve the adjacent residential area. Total appropriation for the project is $2,330,205 with revenues in that amount to cover the cost from two grants, the first of which was from the DEQ grant, one point, excuse me, $1,554,000, and $776,205 from Commerce Grant. As you may recall, construction bid from Carolina Grading was approved at the last meeting for this project. Any questions?
No, sir, I don't think so. Any other Commissioner have a question? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Budget Amendments 28 through 32 along with the Project Budget Ordinance, P.-3 for Bowman Court Sewer Project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And gentlemen, just to remind you, the Consent Agenda does have one change, and that is the removal of Lee Sharp from the Historic Preservation Commission Appointments List.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda with the change.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Next item, number seven, County Manager's Report.
I do not have a County Manager's Report as you all touched on things I was going to talk about in my manager's report, in the Commissioner's Report. So we can go move on to the Consolidated Human Services Board meeting.
Sounds like a plan. We will now move into the Consolidated Human Services Board portion of our meeting. At this... Do we need a motion? No, we don't have to say anything. First item on the agenda is Public Comment. Madam Clerk, we did not have anybody sign up for Public Comment. Next item is Public Health Report. I would recognize Billy Walker, Health Director.
Good evening. I'm here to give the Public Health Update Report. It is our last one for this fiscal year, and it's been a busy year, but a good year for the Health Department. So I'm just going to hit some highlights that we have to get approval on due to accreditation standards, so bear with me as I go through these. The first one is the organizational update. We've got Advisory Board vacancies. This is something that we continually try to fill, and we just can't get these last two vacancies volunteers. So I do like to come and let the county know that those are available. If anybody has this degree, we would love to have them on our board. Staff vacancies, I will say that we just hired a environmental health specialist, and he is training right now, but he actually is doing well and getting acclimated to his position. We're very excited to have him. You know, it's been a year to a year and a half trying to find someone to fill that position, so we're very thankful to have that filled. We do have a dental assistant opening right now, and we have the, we actually have one that was left off. It's the Environmental Health Administrative Assistant position. The intern position was for Western Carolina. It was just something that we were reaching out to the schools that offer the program of environmental health to get interns during the summer, just a way to partner with those colleges and have them come to Alexander County and work with our environmental health The next one is the financial update. I'm going to go over just a summary of what we've done for the timeline, I mean, for the budget this year, and that y'all have already discussed, the meetings that we had with the department heads and with the county manager, Mr. Fox. We did have some questions that we met with Finance and David Moose, just some of the things that were, we didn't know, we were questioning as the environmental health corps due to that position. And then we had the work session we attended on the, at the end of the month, in April. Fee approvals? This is something that you'll have to approve, so I'm going to go over the fees. This is something we have to do annually, and what we do is we meet with the key staff over the programs, and we go over all of our fees. We have to look at our fee policy and how we come up with the method of how we do services. And we also have to look at the sliding fee scale, and that comes out in February every year. Then we bring it to you to vote on. So we only have a few fee changes. I'm going to start with environmental health. He only increased, or he only added repair for bedrooms or less because there wasn't a cost for that, and due to time and them going out, and he thought we needed a price for that, so that's been added. Other than that, he just increased some of the costs. And he looked at other counties our size to see what their fees were, and we're still way below. So he just, he just thought it was something that we needed for the staff time. So you'll see that on the next page for environmental health. Laboratory, we only have one, and that's the AFP. It's fetal congenital. The state used to do that for free, and they stopped. And we actually got a fee last year, but it wasn't put on the list, so we're getting that put on our list this year. And then in general clinic, there were no fee increases, and dental clinic, no fee increases, and only one in behavioral health, and that was due to Medicaid increase on a diagnosis fee. And then we had several immunizations that we increased because the insurance reimbursement rate went up, so we're just keeping up with that. So this is the one that you'll approve and sign tonight, is these are the fees that are Do y'all do that? Do you have to do it now or to approve it?
Yeah, you need a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, also we have, we do, also we do need to take action to approve the new fee structure. Gentlemen, the fees have been presented. It was a pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve new fee schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand.
I will update you. We did apply for the Rural Health Grant, and we were made aware that we did not receive that, and it was due to the fact there wasn't enough funds, and our county wasn't as bad off as other counties in the state. So we will, we will try to reapply for that. That's a good grant for underprivileged and uninsured. It helped us with getting the behavioral health in our, in our department. So we definitely will reapply next, when it's available this coming year. Accreditation updates, this is a long one, and I'm not going to read them all. I sent them in an email for you to review, but we have to come and get approval for our policies. These are just our administrative policies. So there have been some changes to those. The first one, I am going to explain just a little bit. We have to have board operating policies and procedures, and when we consolidated, that really didn't change too much except to say that we had the meetings here, but it's really null and void because y'all have your own process that you follow, and so we're going to keep it in our manual so that we do get credit for it for accreditation purposes, but they will know that it's null and void because y'all follow yours. I wanted to explain that one. The rest of them are just trying to condense some of the policies that we have that, their title might be different, but some of them say about the same thing. So we're just trying to condense what all we have to have in a manual and what all you have to sign to. So we are looking at trying to get all these electronic and so that where we can send them and electronic signatures can occur, but we're not there yet. But that is something that we are working with ITM. So if there aren't any questions, I did include the table of contents as well. And it's pretty lengthy. But this is something you'll have to approve too.
Gentlemen, you've heard Ms. Walker's presentation pertaining to... And my laptop just...or not my laptop. My iPad keeps kicking me out of my stuff. It's had a rough day, I guess. Yep. No, we've already done the fees. Ms. Walker has presented the administrative manual policy changes for 2024-25. I make a motion that we approve those as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously.
Okay, I think that's all I need to prove. So I'm just going to review other things that we've sent. The next one is the agreement addendums. That's for the new year coming up. And I included this. And I also sent copies to Ben Falconberry and David Moose. They have it as well. These are just what the state sends us a contract, and we are mandated to do certain objectives. And we can't pull down the funds until those objectives have been met. So I wanted to make you aware that this is a lot of programs with a lot of contracts that follow. Situational report. I'm just going to talk briefly about the renovations that occurred. I don't know if anybody's been by there since the completion of the project, but it looks...it's a great addition to our building. We've had lots of rain, too. So it's come in handy for patients. So we did cabinets. We used to have a hodgepodge of things that we just put into... The first one is the pill room. And so this is where we have patients come in, and we dispense medications. And it's a very small area, but we were able to put a new workstation with all the lockable cabinets. So it's made that a better workstation for us. The next one, the lower... The lower one is just in the hall. We had a Rubbermaid type container that held supplies for... It was for cleaning supplies. It was for our emergency equipment. And so we put a really big... We used that whole little area and put a big lockable unit there as well. And then the last one is the ultrasound room. And it looks great. He actually put slots for us to put our educational materials in. So all you have to do is go and grab it. It's little slots that are labeled. And we have to hand out lots of educational materials. And so this was a way for us to keep that organized. And it actually closes, so you don't have to see all that. So we've really updated a lot in those rooms. Very, very pleased with how it looks. So the last picture, this is the covered entrance. It's completed. But you can tell it's very, very long. But I mean, it covers that whole walkway. So I don't know if anybody...have y'all seen it? It looks really good. So very appreciative to that. The last stuff I'm going to talk about is what's coming. So we have lots of health ed stuff going on, community outreach. And we work a lot with the Substance Use Committee. So we're excited to have a little tiny breather. But I wanted to put some of the things that we'll be working on during this, during the downtime. We're going to try and gear up for our back-to-school bash, working with the school systems on immunizations, trying to go to the open houses. We are trying to get in the schools, maybe working with substance use at the open houses as well. Hide night celebration, we'll work with that. We'll do...we help with the Senior Center Health Fair, Apple Festival, National Night Out, and the County Wellness Fair. We're also going to offer Catch My Breath training in the summer. And it's been a joy to work with the Port team. He does a whole lot in the community. A lot of people don't know what all he does, but I don't know how he gets it all done, being one person. But he's been a great addition to the county. Any questions?
Very good.
Question, Ms. Walker. In regards to your facility or the building out there? The awning is a...is very pleasing to the eye. The brickwork, was that done by our kids at the school? Or was that done by hired help? Where do you know?
I don't know. I don't know. I'll have to ask.
One other question is the exposed wood around your eaves, like the dental look, and the exposed wood around the windows. The windows on your building protrude out from the building? Like in, I don't remember, two-foot, four-foot sections? Has that wood, that decayed wood been repaired, replaced?
No.
Okay.
I'll ask about the brick, and I'll let you know. I'll send it to Jamie.
Ms. Walker's too busy to pay attention to things like that.
Well, yeah. I mean, it was a big project. But I mean, I think it's been a great... And to be as old as our building is, I think the brick matches well. I was a little worried because I'm very...
Well, the public will definitely benefit from the awning that was erected.
Yeah.
Well, that looks like Stateful Brick Old Plantation brown new white. Just saying. Sorry.
Nice. Any other questions?
Good report. Very good.
Well, thank you. I will say we are... We're excited about using the awning. But we really hope the reason we did it won't ever come back. You know, with COVID, we were thinking we could use this for...like before people come in. So we did utilize the money for that, but we're hoping we never have to see that again. So anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I had to get back to my agenda. Next item on the agenda is the Senior Center up. Senior Center report or update. I would recognize Kristi Hunt, Senior Center Director.
Good evening. So y'all know I'm never going to get up here and say anything bad about the Senior Center because we have so much fun all the time. And it continues to go well. Today was our sign up for birthday lunch in Bingo. We had over 100 phone calls or people coming into the Senior Center today to sign up. So ones that didn't make this list got on the next list. And so we're raring to go, and they're just very excited about it. Our Musicians Jam has been doing really, really well. We are actually going to have an evening event on June 25th. This will be for all ages, so feel free to come out. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will do refreshments. And we are live on YouTube, which is getting enjoyed by people all over the country and beyond. So we're excited about that. They really like it, and it's a great thing. And our musicians are wonderful celebrities now.
Going worldwide.
Oh, they are. They're worldwide, and they're just really loving that. So they want to make sure we have that camera on every time they start. So that is a great thing. Alexander Hospice Caregiver Group is now meeting at the Senior Center. They were not having as much participation where they were currently meeting. And so now their numbers have increased. And I guess people are just feeling more comfortable to come out and kind of sit around and do what they need to do. And it's a great organization, so we're very happy to help that. We're always adding new classes, trying to. We're trying to have this garden class every year. And so that, as you can see from the smiles on their faces, they really enjoyed it this year. Some people managed to take home more than one plant. So they either had their choice of a cucumber plant or a tomato plant. And what they done was plant like cucumbers or like carrots around them. And so they had the pots to take home. It was very nice. Something I did not put on here that we are adding is a new exercise program. It's called cardio drumming. If you have not seen it, make sure you look it up. But I'm hoping by the next presentation, I will have videos, or at least pictures, of our seniors doing this. We've had several practice events. And our line dancing group actually took half of their class this past Thursday to practice the cardio drumming. And they love it, and they said they're going to continue to do that now. So they'll do half of the class line dancing and then half cardio drumming. So we are really excited about that.
Playing cardio drumming.
Okay, so you take like...yeah. You take like this big bucket, and you have a yoga ball on it, and you have drumsticks. And there's music playing, but there's a routine that you have to go through. So it's like choreography. And right now, neither one of us are certified to teach that. So we're using YouTube videos until one of us can get certified at least. And it works great. It kind of bypasses some things, and we can kind of get a start with it. Several senior centers are doing this now. I actually learned about it at one of my previous conferences. And I cannot believe it, the response in it. I'm really hoping that we have enough of the balls and the buckets and the drumsticks in order to provide enough, you know, space and stuff for these classes. So it's very exciting. I'm hoping y'all will come out and see it. Or like I said, at least I'll do a video because I think you'll like it. But look it up on YouTube. It's pretty interesting. Okay, so next, our Stony Point Center. Our Stony Point Center is...it's a painting class. It's only open on Mondays from like 10:00 to 12:00. And recently, it has grown really well. I think we're up to about 14 to 16 participants. They come in and they paint. And we are very grateful to have a volunteer who does not charge us, who is a very good and well-known artist, Terry Petzold, to teach the class. And she does a lot of things with us, and so we're very grateful for her. But we're really glad that the class is now growing, too. So very happy about that. Bethlehem Center, there again, still continues to grow. We are adding more and more classes there. We have a card-making class there. Sandy Herman teaches that class. She is at the Senior Center in Taylorsville also on another day. And so now she is offered to go and teach it over at Bethlehem, so we're grateful for that. We had a tie-dye t-shirt class that was over there. And seniors really enjoyed that. And you can see by the pictures, they've done really well, you know, at making those shirts. This is one of the things I'm most excited about. Senior Center has never had this opportunity before, but there was some ARPA Congregate Nutrition Funds that were released. DSS could not use them. And they had...I think they had another pot of money that they had to spend first. And so we were so excited whenever this money was offered to the Senior Center to be able to provide extra healthy meals for our seniors. And they were...they asked me if it would be possible that I could spend the money. I have no problem with that, not at all. And so we have gathered up some dates and talked to some caterers and just got everybody on board, talked to my other two ladies that work there. And we're all willing to pitch in extra hard to make sure this happens. And very, very pleased to do it. I was so excited. Some of the seniors kept telling me I was really glowing, and so I was very happy about that. Sounds like we're getting a storm. Another thing that we have, we do this every year. We have Operation Fan Heat Relief. So Western Piedmont Council of Governments supplies a certain number of fans for us to hand out to residents of Alexander County that are over 60 years old and have a need for a fan. So we do have that. We will start giving those out on July 3rd. Hopefully, we have enough for everybody that needs one. Okay, our Identity Theft Shred-a-Thon Fraud Prevention Grant. That's a mouthful. We were so lucky to get this grant again this year. So that was a nice event. We had 116 people, you know, participated in that. So we had over 2,600 pounds of documents destroyed. So that was really good. That helps protect their identity, you know, and I think really does a lot of good for the community. The Operation Medication Drop was there, too, the Partnership for Children. So they were there destroying medications, and that went really well. They said they'd had more there than really a lot of the other sites that they had been to. So it was a nice little drive-through event where we managed to help a lot of people, I think, with that one. Our senior celebration, that was so much fun. We had 157 people floating. Casey's listening. It was floating. And we had outside events. We had a nice classic car show that was there and several different events that happened. We done our fun walk that was in conjunction with Uniform Senior Games. We had our DJ. We had lunch provided for everybody. Lots and lots of door prizes. Our community businesses this year really went above and beyond. And we did send all those names of the companies and the community businesses that did participate to the Taylorsville Times. And it is posted on our Facebook to show our appreciation that they really stepped up this year and provided a lot of really nice prizes. We had chairs, new chairs, Ottomans, flower baskets, gift cards, galore, all kinds of really nice prizes for our seniors. And they didn't have to really do anything other than be present to win. But as you can see from the pictures, they danced. They had a really good time. We had a '50s theme. Yes, I bought them candy cigarettes. They had enjoyed that very much, though. So that was fun. Okay, diamond tours have been going really well. Our Mount Rushmore trip actually just got back from there on, I think it was Memorial Day. They got back, had a really good time, enjoyed it. And our next trip that we'll be going out will be to Myrtle Beach in December. So we're doing well on that. We've had several people sign up for that already. Day trips, doing wonderful. We're getting them out, keeping them busy, and as active as we possibly can. Medicare savings so far this year. We have already had over $131,000 of savings. So we continue to help as many people as we can. By the 148 contacts, that shows that we're doing what we need to do. This is always a very important thing to me. A lot of our seniors cannot afford their medications. And we do our best to make sure that we help them in any way that we can, even if we can't get them into the perfect drug plan with our patient assistance programs that we help them apply for and do everything that's needed to do to save them some money while getting their medications. The next page is our participation continues to rise. I like doing the average daily attendance now. And as you can see from...even from this time last year, it's went up a little over 30%. It's just great. I mean, it's really great. It's exciting. The only bad thing is that we're having to turn people away because our building is just a little small, and we're doing everything we can, and there's only so many hours in the day to have these activities. And so we're doing the best we can. We're trying to accommodate everybody. I don't want to ever turn anybody away. But we're trying to, just like I said on the birthday lunches. If they don't get in on one, then they're guaranteed for the next one. So we're happy to be able to do that. We're just expanding, you know? We're expanding to the best of our county's ability. And more and more seniors are moving into the area that I am seeing. And they are really wanting to enjoy the senior center. Any questions?
You brought up a good point. Seniors are moving into the area. That's where our population is gaining ground.
Yes.
So as a county, we need to be able to provide facilities and services for them.
We do. We really need some good senior living, too. I mean, I would love to see the Senior Center expand. I have plans to push it out, you know? But senior...they need senior apartments. They need somewhere to live. And, you know, something affordable for them would be great, too.
One of the things is your participation has really picked up greatly from one year to another.
Yep. I'm just hoping it continues that way. But, you know, like I said, we're limited on space and on time. Even our cardio drumming, we're racking our brains right now trying to figure out where do we put it? Because our days are so full. And I don't want to cancel anything else. You know, a lot of people think, well, seniors are kind of set in their ways. And they are to a point. They like to still do the things that they want to do and the things that they currently do, but they also want these new activities, too. And we want to make sure we provide that. So I don't know if we want to do evening days or not. I'm willing. We'll do what we have to do to keep our seniors happy, healthy, and just active.
Well, I just wish I was excited about my job as you are.
Well, thank you. I really am. I really am.
Because every...I mean, every time you give us a report, it's just... It's evident... Because every, I mean, every, every time you give us a report, it's just, it's evident that you love, that you love what you do.
I love the seniors. The seniors are my heart. They are, they are precious to me. It hurts when I lose one, and I'll tear up saying that, but I, I just love to see them laugh and play and have a good time. And like I said, the senior celebration, walking them, watching them walk around with those candy cigarettes in their mouth, and, and just dancing, and really just, they were just cutting up and just having a blast.
That's right, yeah.
I know. I would never encourage that, but you know, it was just so much fun, and they really loved it, and that's what makes me happy. And yes, I would probably do my job for free, but don't tell my husband that.
But no, it's, I mean, it's obvious how much you, you enjoy it, and at least from my, you know, my perspective, if you're enjoying it, you're also doing a good job with it.
I appreciate that. I'm trying. I'm trying. That's all I can do. The seniors point, point me in the right direction every day.
One thing I, one thing I've learned as my parents aged, or, you know, is they'll be a little more direct.
Yes.
With any criticism.
They will.
And I'm getting that way too. You know, as I get older, I'm like, I'm, you know.
It's okay. I mean, and, and everybody has an opinion, and we do our best. If we, if we feel like we have offended someone, we do our best to smooth that down the best we can and try to just keep everybody as happy as we can. And that's what, that's what I feel they deserve. They need it, you know? They deserve it. I want to be that way. I'm hoping somebody will, you know, look the other way if I say the wrong remark whenever I get older. So.
I look forward to being able to just say whatever I want to and blame it on, you know.
I look forward to it.
Well, not blame it, but just say, hey.
I look forward to retirement.
Well, I am. I'm getting there.
So, I can go in there and play, play what they do.
Every day.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
All right, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the social, Department of Social Services update. I'd recognize Mr. Dave Moose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bringing you tonight, the update from Department of Social Services on behalf of our new director, Carrie Jarrell. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to join us tonight because she's actually at the agency teaching map training for our new foster families. So, she's very busy with that. So, to that note, we want to welcome our new DSS director we recently hired. Carrie Jarrell was promoted to DSS Director effective May 27th, 2024. Ms. Jarrell currently holds a bachelor's degree in sociology and a master's degree in counseling. She previously served as social work program manager for Alexander County DSS for a number of years, and has a total of over 18 years experience in the social work field with the past five, a little over five at Alexander County DSS. She also has prior experience working in mental health and public health. So, a warm welcome to our new director, Ms. Carrie Jarrell. Next slide. Our vacancies. As you're aware, vacancies are seemingly an ongoing thing with Department of Social Services, and I don't think Alexander County is unique to that. Seems to be statewide. We are currently working to fill vacancies agency-wide. Good news is that our Economic Services Division will be fully staffed as of June the 10th, 2024, when our latest new hire starts. The child welfare side is still experiencing some staffing shortages, but we are working diligently to get those filled. Of recent news, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services recently implemented a regional director program, and Director Jarrell and I have met with our Region Two Regional Director, Ms. Donna Faco. She has been engaged to help us evaluate some strategies to help assist in filling vacancies and maybe a little bit of restructuring that may need to be done, and some other suggestions to sort of streamline DSS's operations. So, we'll thank her publicly for her help and look forward very much to working with her and Director Jarrell as we move forward on that. I also want to say thank you to our Human Resources Department. I recently implemented NeoGov software that they led the charge on, is definitely helping us to help streamline the recruitment and hiring process for our vacancies. So, we are hiring. If anyone is looking, we do have some vacancies. Some business office highlights. All available funding allocations, both federal and state sources for fiscal year '24 have now been drawn down. That includes additional Medicaid expansion funds of $100,520.29. The NC DOT 53 trend transportation program audit was recently completed, and all required guidelines were fully met, and a state fiscal review of DSS financial operations was completed recently, and our cycle will now be moving to a biannual review instead of an annual review due to the prior two years ratings of low risk. So, congratulations to our business office staff. They work very diligently under the direction of Michael Dodson and do a great job there. Our economic services highlights, recently completed RITA audit. That's recipient eligibility determination audit. In that audit, over 200 Medicaid cases were checked over the period of about 10 months. Only two paybacks were found totaling $75.63. So, congratulations to all the staff that worked very diligently in that program. All of the program areas are also performing well with no noted issues. From the child welfare side of the house, foster care and adoptions, we currently have 59 children in DSS custody, three out of state placements, which is down from four from our last update, 13 children in Link's 18 to 21 program, which is up from our last update, and 15 foster homes in Alexander County currently. As I mentioned earlier, Director Jarrell is teaching map training tonight, so our current map training class will result in the addition of four new licensed families beginning in August of 2024 for the county. No adoptions to report for the period March to May, however, our staff reported that they do anticipate several new adoptions to be finalized before our next consolidated meeting. So, hopefully bring some good news in that area. Want to share two wins from this side as well. We have one child that has been reunified with their parents as of May, and one child that will reach permanency through legal guardianship very soon. Some additional highlights, our CPS Assessment Investigations Team currently has 48 open cases. We are down to now just one remaining social worker for vacancy. Historically, those have been a little bit difficult to fill. That was down for four vacancies, but we are down to just one now. And our Adult Protective Services Unit has 10 wards currently on their caseload. And with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
I will make a comment to you.
Okay.
I appreciate your willingness and eagerness to jump in there when we needed you to do so from a county's perspective. And is that your daughter back there?
I'm sorry. Yes, that's my daughter. Yeah, one of them.
Well, she needs to know that she has a great dad, and we do appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I will say this, it was like drinking from the fire hose. But we made it through, and I think we're all, you know, in a good place, moving in a positive direction, and I look forward to working with our new director and staff as we continue to move out forward. All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All righty. Bring it back up again. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A45 and 6, for the purpose of economic development contractual conversations and personnel issues. If we will reconvene after closed session, only to adjourn.
Second motion.
We have a motion second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We will go into closed session. Thank you very much for being here, and hope everyone has a safe trip home.